Good morning. In the interest of everybody's time this morning, since we're in a special meeting and we have some commitments, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to exercise the prerogative a little bit to move some things as we go through the agenda, but all the items that are on this agenda in order to get everything that we need to cover while everyone is here before people have to leave. With that comment, would like to move for approval of the agenda.
So, Xavier?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Pose same sign. Motion is unanimous. Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the minutes and I don't have any corrections unless there's any discussion I move to approve of, the minutes as they are presented.
Second by Dr. Patterson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is unanimous. Want to commend Mr. Parsons, who was out late yesterday evening speaking to the Royal United Methodist Church Methodist Men Group and did an excellent job for us and representing us. Appreciate that. Want to remind everybody of the study committee, which will be meeting at 5:30 at Town Hall on Thursday. So keep that on your agenda. And with that, move over to the executive committee and ask for their report there.
All right. I have several things. One, we've had, we've had a legal solicitation to get an attorney. We've got two bids so far. And the bidding has been extended so that we gave our opportunity to participate in this and we hope to get several more bids. We have two so far, exactly. So that's good. The question that we will need to discuss is coverage of EDA and the gap between when Dan leaves, will we get a new attorney? I don't know if you've had any chance to look at it.
Well, I know the county has found someone to cover that gap. I know I could talk to Doug Stanley, also in person, or that firm could also cover the EDA gap.
Right, at least on a temporary basis. I think we'd be very appreciative of that.
The firm is out of its sight. So basically, the county is going to approve interim legal counsel at their meeting on the 17th. So basically, this life legal counsel will just cover the county on the 16th and the 17th. And then your break would basically be, your gap would be between the 16th and the 27th, 27th if I remember. So I can reach out to that firm and see if they'd be interested in covering that gap.
Is there anything that we need to do now to, because I assume there's going to be fees attached to it, that we would, that we should anticipate without having an meeting between now and then?
Well, basically, maybe it would be an hourly rate.
Can we, can we agree that, can we have a motion to have it be not more than X and otherwise we can do something about that?
Sure. I think if you kept it under $10,000, it would help with your purchasing policy. So maybe if you, if it's under $10,000, you just have to make an attempt, you know, to get beds, you don't have to do formal care on that.
So we want a motion that says we would enter, we would agree to utilize the county interim attorney up to an amount of $10,000 on an interim basis with the county's approval.
Make that now or make them later?
Now.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that EDA would agree to use the county attorney up to $10,000 in expenditure for the time period of September 16th to the 27th with the county's approval.
Second to that? End discussion? Okay. I'll second that. Discussion?
Oh, discussion.
Well, seconded, and you look like you wanted to say...
I did, yeah.
Were you just talking about 10 days?
Yes, yeah. Only during the week and the, not maybe until the weekend, but that's the maximum, so. But if we have issues, we want to be able to call them. I think we want to, if we have, you know, meetings in that time period that we go to, it'd be nice to be represented.
Why wouldn't you start on the 14th if you leave it the 13th?
I'm actually working to the 15th, Sunday the 15th is what I agreed to with the county. I said I would cover that weekend, but technically Monday, my sole client has to be from Short County. So I said I could cover for the weekend if anything came up, email's going to cost. So I'll put it the same for your own.
I think we need to clarify, Chris, it's a very small interim period. I think that, that role that individual should play is strictly procedural.
Yes.
Nothing getting into the weeds of anything because that's just money and we need company to give you, it's strictly just as...
I also have a point person, and that person's the only person who can contact the attorney to request, whether that be the chair, vice chair, and then so you don't have every member, or it could be the executive director, the one person is the person who, you know, requests...
I agree, one person.
Agreed.
So perhaps that should be part of your motion, if you wanted to direct one person to have that authority.
What do we want, what do we want to do here?
Let's send all of that through the executive director if it is necessary, that if we need legal counsel, we contact the executive director and the director, because, because you'll be, you leave the...
19th.
15th, the 19th, okay.
I'm really gone during that whole time period. I'm available, but...
That's what I thought, so that's why it can't be the contacts.
All right. So we, I will now read amended resolution here, that we would agree to use the county attorney up to $10,000 of expenditure with county approval, and legal matters, strictly procedural in nature, will be brought through the executive director.
I second that motion. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous.
The police station, I think the, the finance committee's going to get into the weeds on it, but all we were looking for is to get an agreement on the agreed amount that have been, that are plaguing the police station, and then to specify the differences between their two views on things and look for a way to resolve them.
Study case or...
Yes. Now, the joint committee approved an EDA board member joining the study committee, the EDA, what they're calling the EDA reform committee, and I would like to make a motion to have Ed Daly represent EDA at those meetings. He brings gravitas to the, to the effort, can certainly speak eloquently for EDA, and I think he'd be an excellent person to do that.
Would like that motion to include an alternate?
Oh, and then, I guess I could do this, I would propose that I be the alternate when he's not available for doing that.
Only one person, only one member at that meeting? It seems like there would be more than just one.
So, so the whole board can go, but we're in the peat gallery, you know, with the sitting at the, at the table, being able to speak, and...
Now, it's also just one board supervisor, one town council.
Correct. And then, and then all the executive directors and the attorneys are the, is how that they made it up, so.
The point of clarification, the motion that passed, I mean, remember the motion was denied to appoint an EDA member to the committee. The underlying motion, that was...
Right, but, but they accepted the alternate motion, which was either...
They adopted it on the underlying motion, and they voted against the underlying motion. So basically, no one, there wasn't an EDA member appointed.
That's not my understanding of it. Do we have anyone else?
I believe, I believe he is correct. I would suggest we make our motion subject to them letting us participate.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm fine.
But that was, well, that was their intent, but I think they missed...
That was their intent, their intent of the town.
They did not give you...
They voted for that amendment.
That's right.
But they voted against the underlying motion.
They voted against the underlying motion because the underlying motion specifically named one individual. My amendment to that motion said that the EDA board needed to have the flexibility to appoint their own member to that table, and that's what was approved. That's my understanding.
They approved the amendment.
Correct.
They never did the first one, to create the position period.
They never approved it.
They didn't give us the flexibility.
They never approved the motion to create the position, is the problem.
What's the point in approving the amendment?
It was just for Jeff.
Okay.
Is it...
Got it.
Now you can text.
You're exactly right.
Thank you. I'm new to politics.
So we'll calmly show up and participate.
And be prepared, and, and you should be sitting at the table.
If they throw us out, they throw us out.
Yeah, right, yeah. I think that the intent was to have an EDA...
And I think that the majority of the board supervisors want an EDA member on the reform committee. It was the town council that did not want a member on the reform committee, because they already unanimously know, from what I saw, against having a member on the committee.
But only on the original motion, and that's because we, we had a superior alternate motion to it, is how I saw it, but...
No, that's not the way the town saw it.
Yeah.
So, and that's not the way stern board supervisor member saw it, so.
So we'll just make, we'll make this motion subject to, permitted to participate.
It's simple, what you would do is you would vote on amendment, then you would vote on the underlying motion...
Right.
With the amendment, and they would vote in favor of that, you know, and they'd vote against the underlying motion with the amendment.
I figured at 20 minutes, maybe it wasn't worth going through all those things. Let's just see what happens.
Exactly.
And see if on a practical basis, we have somebody, I think we still go through this process, and let them decide to pick us on. So I, I propose that we make Ed Daly the board member of the EDA reform committee.
With the alternate?
Oh, with me as an alternate.
Because one of us will be there.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Thank you all.
That's what I have for the executive committee.
I want to remind everyone that on the 27th, we will be considering the bylaws amendment to the two-year terms, and this is a Tuesday, and we try to keep our meetings on Fridays for everybody's schedule, so I would ask that you keep the dates of October 11th and November 15th in mind. If we need a meeting, a second meeting in October, or we need a meeting between October and the middle of December, those would be the dates. So I'm not scheduling meetings today, but if we do, we'll try to work around those schedules if it comes to assessing. Going back up to the finance committee, Dr. Patterson.
Actually, I'm going to defer to Jory, and she was instrumental in putting this report together.
Well, I thought it was going to be in the packet, so my apologies, I don't have the report with me. Can you print it off from your, from your, as in, to you and Doug? Oh, you've got one there? The finance committee met on September 10th, and at that meeting was Dr. Patterson, myself, and Doug Parsons, the executive director. We addressed a number of projects at that meeting. First and foremost, we discussed the police department. We have gone through, and all of the invoices have been paid to date, and we are currently paying the United loan at 3%. The EDA has been reimbursed nothing from the town at all at this point. We need to come to some resolution on where we are with the town and the county, I mean, with the, with the town, and having them get their own loan and take over this department.
So do you want to discuss that in closed session?
That is after the chair. If you'd like to discuss that in closed session and then come out, we certainly can do that.
Do you want, do you, other than that, do you want to cover and then come back to it?
Yeah, we can, yes, we can. 426 Bow Drive, we deferred that to the asset committee. We did agree that after the asset committee reports, that we would recommend paying a buyer's commission and recommend paying closing costs depending on the sales price. 404 Fairgrounds Road, we went through that and recommended not to pay closing costs. I believe that deal is done at this point, correct, gentlemen? So we are, are we are complete, and they are paying the closing costs, correct?
We have a layer of intent to that effect.
Okay, all right. Insurance, I have, I've started going over all the insurance policies and reviewed the insurance sheet to update it. I've called the insurance brokers that are involved, and we are at this point reviewing those policies. Our next policy to renew is 1325 Progress Drive. It is currently insured by Stoneburner &amp; Carter, and it's a Cincinnati policy. It renews on October 30th, and Afton Inn will come up after that on December 18th. It is a liability policy only. The finance committee will be going through and looking at insurance policies and make a recommendation at the next meeting for the insurance renewal for 1325 Progress Drive.
Next one in October?
Next one October 20, on October 30th. The other thing that we can do is look at if we want to put all of the insurance policies under one umbrella, you know, and then, and then bid them out accordingly with different umbrellas, you know, with, you know, with liability above that and extended coverage. The LOC, I'm assuming we want to discuss that in closed session as well?
Yes.
And that would be, we are, we are still looking forward and should have a profit and loss statement for this next meeting, our next formal meeting. Heather should have that ready.
And would you give them the numbers on the police department, as to what change orders and...
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't know, yeah, I can certainly go over that. The base contract for the police department was $7,736.01. The balance owed the contractor is $439,979.50, including $117,000 of change orders. We did request the copies of all change orders to date, and we did receive them Friday night. And I just haven't, with my real job, haven't had a chance to go through them, so I apologize. We do have punch list items that are still outstanding, including storm water retention issues, the finance committee, which we have not received. We did ask for a list, they were supposed to have a number of items completed as of last Friday. We'd asked for a list of what has been completed to date and a schedule of what's remaining with, with dates next to them. I've not, we have not received that report yet. We did receive everything else we asked for.
Okay. Are you going to cover Fairground?
I am.
Okay.
That's why I defer, I figured...
Okay. I did have a question for the finance committee, if I can hit their to please.
I hope I can answer.
I think you can. Is there a reason why the town doesn't know what their project costs?
No, and that for the life of me, I can't figure that out, because they're the ones who send us the bills. So it's not like we get the bills and send them to them. I mean, they get the bills, and Doug, please step in if I'm, you know, I mean, they give us the bills to pay.
So, so what I did was I reached out to Mike Ferry with Mosley Architects, so that, you know, I could get up to speed on the details of the construction and so forth, and he had sent me an email, which I think I shared with you.
Yes.
And he copied Joe Ball's on that, so I would imagine Joe is, is as aware as we are as it relates to, to the details, and at least certainly in that email, explaining Joe's managing the project, and he's the change orders and those types of activities.
And that's what, but the question was, would they not know what the cost was? And frankly, they are managing the contract, so as, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we've been the pass-through, so they would have much more knowledge than we would at the EDA what the total cost of the project is. So that, that's my point. I'm not sure why they would not know what the cost of the project is.
I just found it strange that we seem to be, we seem to be, we seem to be managing that project at that level when it really should have been managed through another government entity. They would have heard of FEO net, and, you know, we're holding responsibility for being accountable for elements of this project, and it seems that they should know what the cost of the police station is.
One of the things, long-term, this board needs to keep in mind is we need to be a facilitator of projects and not the contractor of projects.
Correct.
And we need to help people do things, help connect, make the connections, but not be in there trying to do the project ourselves. We do not have the staff available here, that's not out here.
The first time we did that was Leach Run Carplay, and that was a pretty big project, and then the EDA did the 34522 Turn Lane project.
And no disrespect, but we have no business doing those projects. We should be facilitating them and helping to connect the finance mechanism with the people who do have the capability to do it. We should not be between the town and the contractor, or Leach Run and the contractor VDOT. We need, in the future, we need to keep ourselves out of that.
Another reason why we did the Turn Lane is because we were able to do it about a year faster versus VDOT managing the project, and that was a revenue sharing project, so it didn't involve any local funds. So sometimes projects like that, they had, there was a reason why the, and the EDA did it.
But that still could have been done by the town, by the county, rather than the EDA.
The county could have managed it, sure.
Yes. No disrespect there.
I have one comment, that's all right.
I was going to ask Greg to review the change orders. I've looked at them, a couple of them look to me like duplicates, and I don't have the expertise to figure out whether they're legitimate or not.
Well, yes, I, I, Jory asked me to review those, and I was glad to, to help out. With that, I was in a little bit of a disadvantage because I didn't have the full contract in front of me, and I didn't have the, the subcontractors in front of me, which is normally what I would review. I would question that. I'm not saying they're not legitimate, I just want some additional backup, but I'm more than happy to help out with that.
Thank you.
And then my comment on that for the finance committee is that, and for the public, really, of that $400,000 and some dollars left, most of that is retainage, which is good. The, the EDA as it relates to the financing and as far as the retainage is, is, is very solid. So we have enough money on the table to make sure that the project is being completed in accordance with the plans and specs and what the quality expectations are for the end building.
For, for timing purposes, could we, do we need to discuss Fairground in closed session?
No, I have a one statement, a one-sentence statement on that.
So just for Parsons, do we need to do anything to approve that?
If you guys want to do it open, we can.
Sure. Okay, so go ahead, please.
Okay, so the asset management committee, so the asset management committee had a one-on-one meeting last Wednesday. The primary topic was reviewing the LOI from the interested party on Bow Drive. The committee recommendations will address proposed EGA, EDA changes to the LOI, so we will be bringing recommendations in closed session on that. For the public's expanded knowledge, the asset management committee is responsible for property disposition. There are several metrics involved when we are entering into negotiations with the firm. The committee reviews offer price, future capital investment, expansion, number of jobs, income tapestry, relevant comps, projected machinery, equipment taxes, amongst other variables to determine the best return of investment to the community. So that's what we talked about. The Afton Inn, I met with the developer of the Afton Inn yesterday for two hours. They are very committed to and anxious to begin work on the project again. The EDA is working on a possible finance package and exploring an agreement restructuring to benefit all the parties involved. This will involve coordinated effort with multiple government agencies, and legalities have to be discussed in closed session. Fairground Road, we did receive a letter of intent with EDA revisions. The acceptance of this will be presented in closed session, or we could vote on that right now.
If you're ready to present that.
We can do that. The public can be assured that the asset management committee and all board members were instrumental in evaluating this LOI for the betterment of the community. So everybody had a hand in reviewing this and making sure that all of our i's were dotted and all our t's were closed.
I don't have...
Hey, quick, a quick point, or, Doug, I know in the letter of intent says that this shall remain confidential unless buyer's agent agrees to it be in public. Does he agree to it?
He hasn't said it to him to remember yet.
Because there is a confidentiality section in that LOIS.
There is.
So I just wanted to make sure if he was aware that we were going to publicly announce it.
So we could close, we could review it in closed session, and then in public session, authorize our signature without disclosing anybody.
Without disclosing the party, make sure we've just said, yeah.
So that's how we should, that's how we should handle that.
Unless, unless the buyer's agent has agreed.
Yeah, I'll check with them first.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
That's a good call, Doug, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And then just in final statements, committee goals for the month, and for those of you that are, are aware, Jory and myself are the primary committee members on the asset management committee. Our goal the next balance of the month is physical inspection of all the real property assets to make sure there are no added risk factors and to ensure that lease-ready properties are clean and show ready for any prospective tenants. And the committee will also discuss a winterization program to ensure that all our assets are properly protected for the season and changing. And then finally, we're going to work on continuation of asset and property identification.
Would ask that the committee consider the development of some sort of a guideline for when the EDA will pay commissions, just so that we can tell everyone, this is our policy, and it's going to be a flexible thing, but we've got some guidelines of something that we could place.
I would agree with that. And there's some, there's some additional SOPs that need to be developed as, as it comes to listing and disposition of properties, which I have a framework built that's just physically getting it in, in narrative form so it can be used in your bag. That's all I have for the committee. Does anybody have any questions?
So, let's go to a closed session. Do we need all three items, or here?
Let's see, discussion...
I think we just need six.
I don't think we need anything under A5, do we, Doug? Number two?
Discussion of the business. Prospect?
We don't have any discussion of prospects, do we?
Do you want to talk about the one for 426?
I mean, that would just be under, that'd fall on, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the other one we need to discuss.
Okay. Sure, then I, then I would keep that in there.
And then we need a motion for the three items.
Go on, Jeff.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed, will you?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
You need to read that, you have to read.
I know, I'm going to read.
Okay, well, he voted on before you read. You have to read it, then.
Oh, then do it.
Then they vote, yeah, because they don't know what's around.
We'll vote again.
We're doing it, we're sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is why we need a close session.
It's why we need an attorney.
I, Jeff Brown, move that the board of the EDA votes to go into closed meeting under the provision of section 2.23711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for the following purposes. of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for the following purposes. Section 2.13711a3, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the EDA. I further move that discussion be limited to property located on Main Street, Stevens Industrial Park and Fairgrounds Road. Section 2.23711a5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcements have made the businesses or industry's industry, industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. I further move that discussion be limited to businesses to be located in the Stevens Industrial Park, Main Street, Haggard, Tulloway Park and/or Fairground Roads. Section 2.23711aa, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public party or body regarding specific legal matters regarding, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. I further move that discussion be limited to discussions of loans, accounting, debt service and the Afton Inn. Can you just go around, okay, Glenn?
Hi.
Daily?
Hi.
Addison?
Aye.
There's not Jeff Brown, is it? Aye. Harold?
Aye.
Aye. We are in closed session. Good, okay, good.
Okay, so we are in closed, coming out, open, back into open session, if you need to move us out.
All right, a motion by, who's going to, who's going to do a motion, me?
Brown.
Brown, seconded by, and by unanimous votes, the board certified to the best of each member's knowledge that all the public business matters will be exhibited from open meeting requirements in this chapter and all the said public business matters identified in the motion by which closed meetings can be preferred discussed or presented in the meeting by the public. Aye. Daily?
Hi.
Addison?
Aye.
Brown, yes, Harold?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Passes.
Back in open session, you've got two motions?
I do. So we have a motion to accept the letter of intent and the asset purchase agreement for 404 Fairview Road.
Fairground.
Fairground, sorry, Fairground Road for $375,000. There is a 30-day study period. It is subject to review by the attorney and will be signed by the chair and vice chair.
So second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion is unanimous. Second motion.
Second motion is to get quotes for repair of 514 Main Street and to give current tenants residing there notice that the EDA will not be paying their housing expenses after September 30th.
And accept insurance.
And we're going to accept the insurance. Insurance.
So second. Discussion, all in favor? Close same side, motion is unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Okay, we missed some of the committee reports and other people here, find if we want to do that.
We'll come back on the 27th.
All right, we apologize.
Who's the second to adjourn?
I'll, I'll second it, yes, all right.
Okay. All right, we are adjourned.
Okay.